So we'll go ahead and get started. I now call the July 5th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. We have Pastor Rao Maya here with Centro Cristiano Bethel. Thank you so much for being here. If you can, there you go. Thanks.
Tess, yeah. It's always a privilege to be here with you all. Before I start a prayer, I would, I have a verse that, this is my prayer for you all, my blessing for you all. It's from Numbers, Chapter 6. It says, "May the Lord bless you and protect you; may the Lord make his face shine on you and be gracious to you; may the Lord look with favor on you and give you peace." And that's, that's my prayer for everyone in this room, and especially for City Council meeting, for you all, and God will guide you all and bless you all. So, Lord, I thank you for this time. I thank you for everyone here present. I thank you for your, your grace upon us, and that is my prayer, Lord, that you would bless everyone in this place, that your face would shine upon each and one of them and give them peace, and guide each and one of their decisions tonight, that you would bless everyone that's going to be speaking, and everything that you would guide according to your will. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role. Ms. Elmore, present. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Doan?
Present.
Mr. Meyer?
Present.
Ms. Skidmore?
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Nipper?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Thank you. You've received a copy of the minutes for the June 7th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? It's also, she probably, she, yeah. You also have the Regular Council Meeting, I'm sorry, the Public Hearing on June 7th, 2022, and the Special Council Meeting, June 21st, 2022. I'll deal with them all at the same time. Are there any corrections to those three minutes? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Reckers, make a motion? You jumped the gun. Ms. Kyle, all right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I want to make a motion to table legislative, legislation item number one, the fiscal year '23 budget amendment. I do know that we, we will need to reappropriate for the projects not completed. However, during the new business, I was going to ask for a, to add an item to our caucus meeting to discuss some additional budget amendments that I would like to talk about. Specifically, I want to have some discussion around moving some of the unrestricted reserves into capital fund, so that we can restrict those for capital-related projects. So my motion is to table item number one.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Ms. Skidmore? Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is there anything that is urgent on this budget amendment that needs to be voted on tonight, or can it wait until the August meeting?
Kara, if you want to come to the microphone, it's already turned on.
Thank you, Kara.
So yes, there is urgent matters relating to moving money from the capital fund to the park fund, because we are in the middle of a park project, and if we stall the project, we do not have the money in the park fund, since we line itemed that out. So therefore, we would have to stall the contractors, and we do have a contract with them that is, that we would owe them the outstanding money, but before we would have to move forward with the project, we would need money in the budget.
So this is the project that had already been allocated in the previous fiscal year?
Correct.
It was stalled due to supply chain issues and other timing issues due to, you know, rain delays?
COVID, supply chain issues.
All kinds of issues that they brought up to us. So it's the park restroom, that is, I would say, eighty-some-odd percent complete, and the installation of the playground, which is, I'd say, eighty-five percent complete as well. So in order to have us be able to finish out these contracts, we have to allocate those funds from the previous fiscal year that it was sitting in capital, moving it into the park fund, where our park improvements are now going to be distributed from. Correct.
Is that, just to clarify, is that the only thing on this budget amendment that you're, that you're moving? It's just the Silver Lake restroom project?
Yes, for, for the parks, but then capital fund, it's the vehicle for Public Works that was already allocated, just moving it forward, and then $5,000 was erroneously omitted from the fire for capital for their vehicle. That was just a keying error. So that can wait, because, if we can wait till April, but the park is the one thing that we do need to move, I mean, it's stall in the project.
Mr. Meyer, could it, could it make sense to just go ahead, if we take out the $5,000 that was erroneously left out, could it make sense to go ahead and approve this and still talk about your amendments?
Well, I guess there's two things, I think.
At the caucus meeting?
Yeah, on, on this one, though, I didn't see where there was in this budget amendment, maybe I just overlooked it, where we were transferring money out of capital fund into the park fund to cover this expense, but rather just adding the appropriation to spend the money out of the cap, out of the, the park fund. So it's an additional $200,000, which we certainly, you know, could do, and we will need to do that. You know, I did have a couple of concerns. One is, if we do that $200,000, because we don't actually have the cash in that fund, because the extra half a million dollars is not going to come until the end of the year, that's going to put a delay on some of the other pieces as well, anyway. So there, so there's that piece. But then, you know, my, my, one of my larger concerns was, you know, how did we not know two weeks ago that the work wasn't going to get done in two weeks? And if we, and if it's not going to get finished in the next two weeks, I mean, we're already at a delay, right? Because we're past, we have no money to spend right now on this project. So we're already delayed two weeks, so it should be a work stoppage, technically, until we get to a second reading, which at the earliest is going to be, you know, the third week of July. So yeah, I mean, we could certainly, we, we don't have to, you know, bundle them together. Where I had, my biggest concern was attempting to, you know, if we do decide after the caucus meeting to move forward, we could potentially have a first reading and a second reading on the same day, or we're amending the budget at the caucus meeting and then coming back with another budget amendment, you know, that, that first of August, and I think Kara did mention that there were some additional items that we may need to amend in this budget already.
As far as the TIF. But that, the TIF is still something that's?
Yeah, TIF and some vehicles potentially, and, right, I think that's one of the ones we mentioned.
No, no more vehicles. The vehicle is already in there, already included the vehicles, so. But we cannot do a first and a second within the same meeting.
Right. Well, okay, so, I mean, we, we could start the second one, because they, it's not like there's two firsts or two seconds. So we could start the process for that next amendment, because we're not actually amending the budget twice differently on the same day.
Yeah, I, I think you have a valid concern, and the, the concern is, when we line item everything out for capital and parks, it makes it hard to complete a full project within the timeframe that we have. So one, and this is one of my solution, or a solution that I thought of, is that we could do a threshold for, say, thirty to fifty percent within the budget, and it's line item out for any rollover projects for the next year. So if this hap, because this is going to happen, we're going to have the same problem again next year in the budget, because when we design a park, it takes three months, we start at July 1, they design July, August, September, possibly October, and then they can't start working on the park until mid-March, when it's rainy season, so we're going to have the same issue come again next year.
No, absolutely, I understand, but I think the line item is, is the way for council to make sure that they're getting the, the appropriate transparency into those expenses. Whereas if, if two weeks ago, we said, "We're going to add an additional $200,000 just in case," then the potential is there to actually spend not, you know, $400,000, but $600,000, because the appropriation is there, and we no longer have control over it at that point.
It's a valid concern, but I'm not sure how to move forward with this project.
If you look at the budget amendment, it specifically line item, line items it for Silver Lake Restroom, $155,000. That is the dollar amount that we're, we still need to comply. So it's not like it's just going into a bucket to where it can be spent on anything. We've, we've line itemed, line itemed it for you, just to kind of, you know, what you wanted.
No, I understand it in this one, but she was, suggest.
So I guess your, your solution is, you wish I would have came back when we were having our second reading. I didn't know that at, at point, that it was going to be completed, and I don't know, I don't even sure if any of us knew that. So we could have like a, a miscellaneous line, but then if we don't use it, or like, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, at this exact moment, how much time is needed to finish this project? I mean, do we think it's two weeks? Is it four weeks? Is it six weeks?
I mean, we think it will be done by the end of August, but the year is our?
And that, that's exactly, that's exactly my point, where we had a huge miss here, right? We're saying we're, first week of July, it's going to be done by the end of August, that's seven weeks. So somehow, it went from, hey, we've got two weeks left in this budget year, to we think it's going to get done, to, hey, wait a minute, it's going to go way past into the next fiscal year. So I think that's, that's a big miss, just from, you know, managing, you know, I think the money on this side. I agree, we've got, we have to appropriate, because we've got a contract out there. My intent here was just to, to have them separate, but if the desire is to move forward with this one, and then we could potentially come back with a second one, then, then that is the desire, and, you know, that's how the, the motion on the floor will be voted.
Okay, so moving forward, just so I, before we do this, if we, this happens again, do you want me to come forward and say, "We need a budget limit, a budget amendment just in case for rollover items?"
I mean, I think we should at least have some discussion about, you know, potential rollover items as we're coming into the year. I know early in the, with the first, as we were going through the process, I remember asking specifically about some of those items, do we think they're going to get done? Absolutely, we, we, we're confident that we'll definitely be able to buy a truck this year.
Right, because we, that was in March, I mean, there's a lot of things that come to play.
That's exactly my point, you know? But, but, but we get to with two weeks left, and we know at that point, we can't get a truck, let's, let's put those things in place, you know, earlier. But we can talk, I mean, I guess, actually, I won't need to talk about it, because I won't be sitting in this chair next year, so I'll be sitting out here.
I, I hear what you're saying. I don't necessarily disagree that we, it requires more discussion, and that it is a miss, but I'd just remind you that this is just a first reading, and it, it wouldn't hurt to keep the ball rolling. We can still discuss it at the caucus meeting.
Is there any other discussion?
Is the motion to table everything, including the trucks and the parks?
He motioned to table the entire?
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
Ms. Kyle?
I agree with Mr. Hermes, since this is a first reading, I don't see any reason to delay it. I mean, we'll be able to discuss it anyway, so to me, it doesn't make sense. I, I would rather just go ahead and have the first reading.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Ms. Elmore?
My, my motion was to table.
No. Mr. Skidmore? Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
No, ma'am.
Motion fails. Are there any other changes or additions to be made to the agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Mrs. Elmore, Mrs. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, tonight, our first special presentation, and only special, special presentation, is our Business Spotlight, and we have Natasha Combs here from Erlanger Kinder Care. Thanks so much for being here with us. If you can, there you go.
Hi, thank you. Hi, everyone. I am Natasha Combs, I'm the Center Director at Erlanger Kinder Care, so not too far from here, where we're standing. I wanted to thank you guys for inviting me here and involving me, really, in everything that you all do as a center, that's, you know, as a city, and to involve me in it, I think that's really amazing. And I wanted to apologize for my nervousness, because it's much easier for me to talk to children than it is for me to talk to a room full of adults. So really, I am an advocate for children, and I feel like that's really the most important, you know, aspect of future generations, and what the city of Erlanger is going to be, not just now and next year, but ten years down the line. And, you know, when our children that are little, they, they're going to grow, and, and you guys chose me as your Business Spotlight, and that's, it's wonderful, and I, I really appreciate it. Kinder care is different in a lot of ways, because we stand by four really great pillars, and the first pillar is health and safety, and that's really providing a trusting environment for parents to care, you know, to trust us, to care for their children, and it's, you know, we're providing a safe environment for them, for them to be healthy, and our, our other pillar is for growth, and it's, the, the basis of that is growing and children. And right now, we have officially accomplished enrolling enough kids to where we are now meeting to where we were in 2019, and we are just so excited about that, because then was a totally different time, and, you know, now we're, we're, we're there, and we're excited about it. We've brought in a lot of new teachers, and we've been training them and, and really pushing in that growth of, you know, not only are we enrolling children, but we're hiring, and we're a company that we stand for, and we want to have a positive and loving environment for our teachers also, because that is so important. And our third pillar is with engagement, and that's engaging with all of you and the city of Erlanger, but most importantly, it's engaging with the children, and getting our teachers to engage with the child, with the children, and us as leaders in this business, engaging with the teachers to make sure that they need everything that, that they have. And then our last is educational excellence, and that's where we really outshine, and, because that educational excellence is about our curriculum, and that kindergarten readiness to make sure that our kids are going off into their public schools comfortably, to where, you know, they aren't overwhelmed, and that's, that's really what my business is about, sorry.
Very good. Well, thank you so much for coming here. You didn't have to be nervous.
I know, I'm sorry.
You did wonderfully. Thank you so much for being here again.
No, thank you so much.
All right. Hey, all right, moving on. There's no comments from the public. All right, the mayor's report, I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to let you guys know that the inter-local agreement with PDS has been signed, and has been approved by the state. So our expanded jurisdiction for commercial building permits, inspections, and plan review is now in the hands of PDS, as well as our zoning. And we are so appreciative to PDS for taking this task on and welcoming us with open arms, bending over backwards, and I know, I know we're going to, this is just the beginning of a wonderful, a wonderful relationship with the city of Erlanger and PDS. So we're very excited about this. That is the end of my report. Ms. Randall, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we have on the agenda tonight, under unfinished business, the proposed text amendments that were brought up, I believe that was two months ago now. I apologize for my absence at the last caucus meeting, and I wasn't here to go over those with you, but I look forward to that discussion, and I'm happy to take any questions when we get to that item in the agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Nothing specific for the city report, but I'd like to note that our intern Shelby is here. This is her first city council meeting, so she's excited to learn about city government and local government. And I am Alexandra Kearns, here on behalf of Jack Gatlin.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Glenn, report on capital projects.
All right, thank you. Capital project updates. July 13th, we're going to be opening bids on Sigma, Kappa, and Theta, which is new concrete street replacement projects, and with new sidewalks. Just an update on the two park projects that was previously discussed, Silver Lake Phase II Park Improvements, and what we've got going on there is, we got a little bit of curb and some asphalt to put down, and that project will be completed. It's taken a lot of rain delays this construction season, and it's kind of pushed it back, and they should be done here in the next week and a half or so. The restroom project, currently they're working on installing the new flooring in there, with all the fixtures and stalls to be installed this week and next, and, and the stonework will be starting this week and completed next week, and the only thing that will be outstanding is we're waiting on the trellis, which had to be field-measured once construction got so far, and then, and then we've hit major delays with the delivery of that. So it was supposed to be six to eight weeks, and it's going to be considerably longer than that, so we're just waiting on that. Things are turning out really nice down there, though, and one thing I want to ask for is at the next caucus meeting, for an opportunity to go through the Erlanger Road Park RFP, starting our Parks Task Force tonight, we kind of talked about maybe getting council up to kind of speed on some of the things that are within that RFP, things that were bid on and being proposed that we work on, so that way everybody has a clear direction as far as how we're moving, what we're moving forward on with that park project. So if anybody would like to add that to the next caucus meeting, I'd be happy to put a presentation on for that. That's all I have. Any questions?
I'd like to go ahead and add that, make sure that's added. I'd like to go make sure that's added.
All right, thank you.
All right, are there any other department heads that have a report? Ms. Hoffman?
As part of our celebrating our 125 years, we began last month recognizing the names of the individuals who are on our Friendship Garden wall. Last month, it was former Fire EMS Chief Terry Allen. This month, it is Roger and Mary Moller. They, Roger was a volunteer firefighter, and his wife, Mary, was a member of the department's Women's Auxiliary. If you check out our Friendship Garden wall on the city's website, under About, you'll learn more about Roger and Mary. Their son wrote a really nice article for us, and there's a picture of the two together. And then tomorrow, on our social media pages, the article will also be placed on there. And then tomorrow, on our social media pages, the article will also be placed on there. And that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Chief?
There we go. So, um, I don't have necessarily a, um, report or presentation tonight, but, um, something that I would like to do at the next caucus meeting. I've told you guys before that when you support us by allowing us, you know, these large purchases, like the TASER, the body worn cameras, um, training, we had a call a couple of weeks ago that was, um, probably handled as well as you could ever imagine a call could be handled, and it could have easily resulted in someone being shot. Our officers were able to, um, you know, lean on their training, and the Axon body cameras that you guys just allowed us to purchase all turned on at the same time. The new Axon TASERS that we just purchased worked flawlessly. So, my plan is, as long as everyone is okay with to give like a five-minute presentation, I want to show you the actual body worn camera, show you the, let you listen to the radio traffic as the officer is responding to the call, so you can hear the facts that he knew, and then see how our officers actually handled the call, um, showing up. So, just not a teaser necessarily, but I want you guys to be able to, to see what all of these purchases actually did and how well they worked. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any other department head reports?
I just want to quickly recognize some businesses that made investments in the community through the Small Business Grant Program this year, and those closed out at the end of, the month of June. So, we did have three come in last month. The Jaeger Firm, um, which is located on Erlanger Road, completed a parking lot paving and did some brick repair work to the outside of that building. Most of you have probably noticed the new sign that was installed in front of the Skylight Financial Group building here on Commonwealth, and that's really a nice addition to the Commonwealth Avenue area. They also completed, uh, new privacy fencing in the rear, and also a patio on the rear of that property. The walk-in closet has recently added a new sign. They completed, uh, parking lot ceiling and striping, and they also have some additional improvements planned for next year as well. So, want to recognize and thank those businesses for their investments in the community. And also wanted to say thank you to all the members of council, uh, and the department heads and members of staff, as well as community members that came out to the grand reopening for the Strike and Spare. That was a really fun event, um, and it was great to see so many people turn out to support that business. And if you haven't been in to see all of the improvements, I encourage you to do so. It's really a neat, um, neat thing that we have in the community with the addition of the arcade and the skating and all the, the new amenities that they have. So, thank you.
Thanks, Emmy. Any other reports? Any reports from task forces? Mr. Nipper?
We completed the, um, emergency task force, and Sherry, I will get those notes and everything finished for you. Or to you, I should say. I've just been very busy over the holiday. But I want to bring, you know, the findings before council, so everybody can have a final preview and look over. And then we just need to discuss how we communicate it out to the public, and then the emergency task force is closed.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Do you want us to put it on the caucus meeting?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. We'll go ahead and add that to the agenda. Are there any other reports? Okay. All right, we have a few bids on the agenda here. Road Salt. Mr. Glenn?
Okay, bids. We had a couple bids this past month. First would be on salt bids. We partner with Kitten County on our, uh, salt bids typically. And they went out to bid, and, and when the bids came in, uh, they were significantly higher than last year. So, what they opted to do was take the second-year option on last year's bid, uh, continue that, uh, for this year. So, um, our first 2,000 tons of salt will be purchased through Kitten County on their bid, and, um, bear with me, it is $79.81 a ton. Additionally, we, um, do annually a reverse bid on salt, and we had two bidders come in on that, which would be Cargill and Compass. And Cargill being $130 a ton, and Compass Materials being $145.04 a ton. So, we'll also be signing an agreement with them. That way, if we were to need salt beyond the 2,000 tons that we would be purchasing with Kitten County, we have an additional option with Compass, uh, to meet our needs, even at a higher cost. Of course, we'll be using the lower-cost option first. Uh, any questions on the salt bid? All right. The, uh, other bid that we had, uh, this past month would be, uh, a street bids, and that would be Kimberly Drive, Mittin Drive, Debbie Lane, and Jaclyn Drive. And these projects are, uh, going to be awarded to Paul Michelson's son. They're low bidder at $1,276,560. That is within our budget. Uh, these, uh, streets are going to be asphalt overlaid with new sidewalks. And on Jaclyn, we'll be removing all the islands and all the side cul-de-sac streets that are, it currently exist. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah.
Going back to the salt bid, would you, if you know this off the top of your head, could you remind me? If you don't, off the top of your head, then don't worry about it, we'll talk about it later. Do you know about how many tons we go through in an average snow event of salt?
Well, last year was an extreme year, and we came in just under 2,000.
With how many events did we salt?
How many events did we have last year? Would you know, Kevin, off the top of your head? I mean, it was, that was the most usage that we've had. And, uh, we went back and created a, uh, five-year history that was in our monthly report a couple of months ago. And I do believe last year's usage was higher, and the amount of events was more extreme than any other year in the last five. I, I, I don't know exactly what the number was, but I know it was our biggest year, or worst year ever, however you want to look at it.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Ms. Reckers?
So, you guys are removing all of the islands on Jaclyn? Like, permanently?
Yes.
So, it's just gonna be a, a winding?
No, you'll still have those little cul-de-sac turnouts.
Sure.
It just won't have the islands in there.
Okay.
So, we're eliminating, whenever we get the opportunity, we're going to eliminate these islands because of the on-street parking that we have, and it makes it absolutely, um, impossible to get vehicles around it when we have these islands. So, uh, yeah, so we've been, we've been eliminating, and these are the next, I think there's three of them that we'll eliminate.
Okay, the next bid, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Um, I had one more question about the islands, I'm sorry. What was the purpose of them to begin with? Was it just like a, I mean, I don't know. I grew up on a cul-de-sac too, and we had one, and then we didn't, and I never knew what the reason was. I mean, it makes sense why to take them down, I just didn't know if there was a purpose for them, ever.
Aesthetics. You know, I, I think people put them in there, they look good, uh, but then the maintenance of them, you know, who maintains them? You have some homeowners associations take care of them, you have residents take care of them, you have public works take care of them. But they're, um, virtually impossible to maintain, because once you enter from the right side and come around, you know, around, uh, maybe a little more at halfway, then nobody can stay in, on the road. Garbage trucks and so on and so forth, they get into the islands, uh, and they become a terrible mess. So, uh, it's, when you have cars parked in the cul-de-sacs. So, uh, we're finding that we have better success aesthetically even with them just being gone. And I love aesthetics, so it's not something, you know, I look to make it better, not worse, for sure.
All right. The next bid on the agenda is the police, oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Kyle?
Um, and this may not have an answer, but I know on Perimeter Drive, uh, there's an island there that just separates into two lanes, and I'm sure that was put there for a welcome to Fairwood Hills subdivision. But my question is, when we resurface that, would we be getting rid of that island also? Because I think that makes parking, uh, difficult also for the people that live in that residence. And then when you come by, you know, you have to kind of be careful.
Excellent question. So, what would happen when we go to redo that? I think it's something we definitely would have to look at, you know, a case-by-case basis, you know? Because not only does it make it a little difficult, I mean, they look great, you know? But it makes it difficult for traveling in, you have to put signs in it to keep people right to go around them. But it's also, uh, a terrible spot for water to penetrate into the subgrade. So, I think that's, uh, one of the major factors we're finding, is that, you know, where you're trying to create these entrances into streets or subdivisions, it's a great initial thought. But I have learned through my many years of doing this, that it's better to not do that and do stuff on the sides of the street, to maybe do more of a gateway there, to where you don't have this hole in the middle of your road that lets rainwater in and destroys your subgrade. Same way with the entrance into Cherry Hill, it got the same island and everything. You know, it's, it's a great opportunity to do stuff that looks good, but I think when we go to redo streets, I think that's something we definitely have to look at.
Any other questions? Or comments? Concerns? All right, we have the police vehicle equipment and installation. Chief?
After advertising, we only received one quote back for the equipment and installation. That was from RidgeNet Network Group. They're out of Somerset, Kentucky. It's actually, um, they're located near the dealer that we purchased the Ford Expeditions this year. So, um, just for historical purposes, I looked back when we got in here. The quote for the vehicles this year that they provided was $65,813. That's only, um, $900 more per vehicle than we paid to 911 Fleet last year. And I say only because historically, when we have a vehicle outfitted here, we have to pick up the vehicle with the dealer, we then have to take it to get striped, then we have to go pick it up, take it to get it outfitted. Uh, the quote that they supplied, they do everything. The vehicle shows up from the factory on a car hauler, it goes to their place, they stripe it, they install everything, then they deliver them here to the back parking lot. So, staff doesn't have to mess with any of it. So, uh, we're very happy with that quote, and we think that it was, um, in today's times, very fair. So, any questions?
All right. Unfinished business. Uh, the first item on, on here is the proposed text amendments. I'll go ahead and kick it over to Emmy.
Thank you, mayor. You've had these in front of you a couple of meetings already. Just to reiterate, this would be a request to make an application to the Kitten County Planning Commission to move these proposed text amendments forward. In their process, they would then provide recommendations on these text amendments that would come back to council, and none of these changes would take effect without you all approving a first and second reading on these changes. At that point, you can have some additional discussion if there are still questions on those or concerns about them. Uh, but before they do go to KCPC, um, we would be looking to authorize that application or authorize me to make that application to KCPC. Would you like for me to go through these, um, line by line? Would you like to, uh, bring up ones that you have questions or concerns about before the, before the group this evening?
I'd, I'd like to see go, uh, line by line.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, this would be for the September KCPC meeting? Is that right?
If they are all moving forward this evening in the resolution, I can make application for the August meeting.
Got it.
That deadline is this Thursday. Okay. All right. Let me pull up the file. Council, Councilman Hermes asked if, um, if these text amendments come back to council and they, and you all want to make changes at that time. That's probably a, a legal question for, for, um, our legal team, but typically, if they, if the changes are not substantive, or if they are in the line, along the lines of what was contemplated that was put forward to KCPC, um, then you can consider those changes. Sometimes when, when text amendments go through KCPC, either KCPC's staff or the planning commission may make a recommended change as a part of their, um, consideration that comes back to council.
But if we're doing them collectively, and we decide to pull one out, that kind of resets that whole piece, right?
No, you could choose to only adopt.
But it's not like we're gonna have 12 ordinances coming back to, to adopt them, right? I'm gonna substantially change what's coming back on an item-by-item basis, right? I mean, we've not historically done, at least I've never seen it, where we've done this volume of changes in one fell swoop without a Z21 aside where we repealed the entire zoning code. So, that, I mean, that would be, you know, I guess, but we'll, we'll get through them yourself.
Yeah. But you could choose to adopt, you know, items three and four, but not six or seven, or something like that, when they, when they come back through. Okay. Let me pull up to this, this first one. The first one is related to, um, the, the regulations pertaining to, um, outdoor seating for dining areas for restaurants. It was noted by, um, by Mr. Stewart and myself that, that the language within this section had referred to, and I'm, I'm looking at section... Yeah. Section three here. Restaurants without nor dining and outdoor seating or dining adjacent to residential districts. So, that, that phrase is being stricken, because, um, these standards were intended to apply to all outdoor dining areas. So, all outdoor dining areas would be required to have waste receptibles. All outdoor dining areas cannot impede upon a sidewalk. So, those standards were intended to apply to all outdoor dining areas. And then the, the section down below, seven, um, outdoor seating areas shall not operate later than, and then it provides some restrictions on the timing of operating that outdoor dining. That is the piece that was intended to apply to, um, areas adjacent to residential.
Ms. Randall, could you scroll down so we could see that piece? Thank you.
So, this is where that language was intended to be, pertaining to when those can operate timeframes. And then, um, Councilman Meyer pointed out, uh, this is a slight change from the last time you saw this language. Uh, it was intended that outdoor seating areas would not be restricted in terms of the percentage of capacity that they could have, so that you could have, for example, a fully outdoor operating restaurant. So, that, the language that pertains to the capacity of the outdoor seating is, as a restriction based on the indoor seating has been, is suggesting to be removed as a part of this text amendment. Questions about this first one? Okay. Number two. Uh, this pertains to the way the MU district, um, allows for integrated, integration of multiple uses. The MU district is the district that we are sitting in right now, and also includes the areas across the street, formerly the Commonwealth Station Zone. So, within the language of the, the zoning ordinance, that is the new ordinance that was adopted, it was restricted that there had to be multiple uses within one parcel or within one building. And we have a, um, proposed development on a parcel within the district that would, that is currently a standalone commercial. that is currently a standalone commercial building with one use in that building. They wish to redevelop that parcel with one use on it in the same manner that it has been historically. So these language corrections are to state that it's intended that the district integrates multiple uses, but they're not required to be multiple uses on one parcel or within one building. And then there's also a tweak to the definition of multiple uses, just to keep in line with that thought. Questions on that one? Okay. Yes, Ms. Jasper?
What was the reason for the language originally? I guess I'm thinking, I mean, we're completely changing what's there now. And I don't know what the discussion was previously about why you would require multiple uses on one parcel and not allow a single use. I'm just wondering if there was another reason for it that I'm not seeing.
Mr. Meyer, did you want to?
I'll take that one. It was actually, it was just an oversight.
Okay.
The idea was that within the district, you could have a multiple uses, yeah, and not necessarily a single building.
A single building.
Yeah.
Okay, number three. This proposed text amendment is to allow privacy fences in the side and rear yards of residential and commercial properties. The previous zoning ordinance did allow those. However, it was omitted within the new zoning ordinance that these would be allowed. So this is simply just to add that back in, that people can continue to have privacy fences inside and rear yards.
Yeah, and just to, the omission here was there's a table that has X's in the grid. We missed the X's in the grid.
All right, number four. The previous zoning ordinance contained language that required a driveway to be set back at least one foot from a neighboring property line. Mr. Stewart had noticed that this was not anywhere in the new zoning ordinance. So this is to add that language back in. And we did consult with PDS on the best place to put that in the new ordinance, and they provided some suggested language.
Yeah, this was, I think, the first one that I just didn't really see a point of putting that back in there. I don't know what the difference is between one foot off versus right against the property line for a driveway. I mean, aesthetically, it's going to look the same. Unless you've surveyed, you know, your property, you're not even going to know. So it just seemed like one that, and maybe there's some other history or reasoning why we would put this one back in. But it just seems, just because it was there before, there was a lot of things that were there before that we intentionally, you know, took out and made changes to because it was the right time to do it. If there's not a significant reason to put it back in, I'd see, I would just assume leave well enough alone.
Mrs. Kyle?
Well, I just have a thought. I mean, if you're not going to have a foot on the one side of your driveway, some people might feel like you're trespassing on their property when you get out of your car. If you're, you know, if your car is on the edge of the driveway and you open the door and now you're stepping out on their property, that's the only thing I can see. I mean, that's just a thought. I don't know if that would be, you never know. People just, especially in the hot weather, they get kind of antsy, as the police department well knows. I mean, they just want to argue everything. And I can see where that might cause a problem if you don't have that foot there for you to get out of your car. It sounds dumb, but I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I also wonder around flag lots as well. You know, what does that look like? And if you've got, you know, two pieces of land coming out to connect to the road, does that mean you've got to have a break in that single driveway that's going, a two-foot break, right? Because if I'm thinking about, right?
Two feet, yeah, a foot on each side of the driveway.
You'd have two small slivers, right? I mean, if that's what we're requiring, that's what this is going to make happen there, right? Which I think looks very odd.
But that was the rule we had before. You know, it's not like we had, it's not like it's prevalent around the city. Prior to Z21, that was our rule.
I mean, I get, yeah, you're right, but wasn't, it wasn't enforced necessarily.
Well, yeah.
But I guess the point is, if we think it makes sense, then yeah, let's push it forward. But it just, to me, when I had the conversation, it just didn't make any sense to me. I mean, it really serves no significant function.
I think I agree with Mrs. Kyle that we probably have a greater potential to ignite more arguments by letting someone put it on, right on a property line. Because, I mean, it takes more than, I mean, to physically pour a concrete driveway, you have to dig past that area to create the form. You know, so you're forcing workers to go on to someone's property and tear up their property to be able to pour right up to a property line where potentially, if there's that foot, you could completely stay off.
So we're saying that if someone needs to get a permit to rebuild their flag lot driveway, that we're going to require them to have two feet of grass or something else in between that driveway? I mean, that's what we're saying, if we're going to enforce it.
I think that's where you'd ask for a variance. That's what we have the variances for, it's dimensional variances.
I'm just saying, it's a couple hundred dollars for someone to fill out a permit, have a driveway poured. But they also pay a couple hundred dollars to be heard by the Board of Adjustments. Like, it's, I think that's just government nonsense. Just keeping it real.
Yes. Mrs. Jasper Lucas?
Do we, and I guess we don't know if we have complaints about not having the rule because we've always had it. But do we have builders complain that we have to have the foot?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I just, I don't know. I see both sides of it. I don't, I would hate to tell somebody they have to come and spend $300 on a variance. But at the same time, when I'm backing out of my driveway, I probably, at least once a week, drive on that foot next to my driveway. I mean, I have a single with driveway. I know my kid did when he was learning to drive, so I just, I'm just saying. And I can see where some people, if it got torn up, especially when it snows, you cannot see where you're driving. And I'm, there's always tire tracks in my yard after it snowed because we've clearly driven over the grass, because you can't tell where the driveway is. So, I mean, I have nice neighbors, but I might not at some point. So I'm just, if there's not, I get both sides of it, I really do. And I'm, I don't, I don't really know. But I know that I drive on that foot at least once a week.
Well, this is one you could remove if you're not comfortable moving it forward when we, when you get to the item on the agenda or let it go through to Planning Commission and make a decision when it comes back. Anybody else have questions, comments on that one? Okay. All right, moving on to number five.
We're calling that one number four? Okay, I just want to make sure that I get the number right when we, when I make the motion to amend.
Okay.
I don't mind regulation, but when things are pointless, right? Yeah, they can do a variance, but how often is a variance ever turned down? Almost never. So if that's the case, then what is the point? That's my whole thing here, we're over-regulating for the purpose of over-regulating.
It forces two people to talk and to come to an agreement before they come in front of a hearing, you know? I mean, it forces people to be neighborly, in my opinion, and ask permission rather than to just barge onto someone else's property.
It's like a trial run.
But you're not necessarily barging on their property, you're, you know, doing the work on, on your own.
There could also be issues with like debris runoff. You know, I mean, I have a residential property next to a commercial property, and we have the one-foot strip, and it's actually quite nice because I don't have them parking in my driveway and I'm not parking in theirs. You know, and I get a lot of the road dirt that comes off Commonwealth, and that stuff would all just flush into theirs or flush back into mine. So I think having that strip of grass there, or that setback at least, might help to prevent some of that run over water.
Okay. Moving on to number five. This is a couple of text changes within the sign regulations. It was noted by Mr. Stewart that the community commercial district, somehow through the incorporation of the new zoning, we had inadvertently omitted what was previously the minimum standard size for a sign in that district, which was 25 square feet. So we're adding back in that minimum standard so that no one would be held to a lower standard than that. And then in addition, as a part of discussing these changes with Mr. Vidakovich over at Planning and Development Services, he recommended some changes to the table, the table within the sign ordinance that was called, let's see, where is that language? Right here. So there's a table that provides for what signs are allowed within what districts and what the minimum standards are and maximum standards are for those signs. That section was previously titled Signs Requiring Permits. And some of the signs in that table don't require permits because they fall under the signs that don't require permits. So they're recommending, that's something that they've noticed, and they've recommended that we're re-titling that section Allowed Signs and that that table is called Allowed Signs, and then the descriptor changing to reflect what's actually within that table. Does that make sense, questions about that? Okay. All right. Changes under number six. These are within Article 13 Processes and Procedures. Within the new zoning ordinance, it was the intent to remove any unnecessary language that would be repetitive of sections of KRS that spell out certain processes. So within this section, there was a lot of language added that provided for how an appeal is to be handled by the local Board of Adjustment. So we're recommending that that language be stricken because it's all provided for in the KRS. And then adding one KRS citation to that section just to make sure that everything is covered under those KRS citations. Questions on that one? All right. Okay, number seven. Number seven is a little bit more complicated. So number seven, there was a section within the Z21 blueprint, which was the template ordinance that was provided to all of the cities to utilize. There was a section that was provided on temporary uses and construction trailers. Basically, this would allow the zoning administrator to allow someone to establish a temporary use within the community for a certain period of time and then allow them to do that with any necessary provisions or conditions to that permit. This would allow for things like a temporary food truck, for example, or a construction trailer during the construction of a piece of property or a building. So this is language that staff feels like could be useful moving forward as we see these kinds of things be more prevalent in the community. So if a use would be established that is less than 30 days, they can come and request this temporary use permit. And then the additional standard that's suggested to be added to the character standards. So there's a section within the new zoning ordinance that provides for character standards. This is the section that talks about, I guess, the aesthetics that are within the different districts. So there's a recommendation to add a character standard here that states that mobile trailers or these types of, I guess, mobile buildings can't be used as permanent buildings within any of the business districts. So that is, for example, if someone wanted to establish a food trailer in a permanent location that was something on a chassis, that would not be allowed as a permanent building establishment.
Yeah, I've got a question on that one. So what makes it permanent? So if I roll it 10 feet forward, it's now in a new location.
Well, by establishing this temporary use standard, that would mean anything that's, anything that's to be established for longer than 30 days would be considered a permanent.
But if I move it, does that no longer make it permanent?
On the same site, it would be permanent.
I'm just saying, let's say I have a food truck that rolls up and they're parking on the street, and I got my tacos, and they're there for 30 days. And then I move that food truck 15 feet forward. Does a 30-day start over with a new permit?
I think it would depend on, it would have to be in one location, yeah. I don't think this is intended to permit food trucks on city streets. This would be if a property owner came forward and requested a use on their property. Does that make sense? A construction trailer. A building on a chassis on a private.
Is this a problem at the moment?
Parcel. Yes.
Where?
Yeah, I don't know, but we can discuss it in an open meeting.
We can? Why not?
Many years ago, a Board of Adjustments meeting that occurred how many years ago, establishing their ability to use the construction trailer, given that it was a temporary, a temporary trailer. However, that temporary trailer has now turned into a long-term trailer.
But does this fix that, or?
This.
This is, this is an effort to make sure that that cannot happen in the future.
Correct. Yes.
We can't change what's already been done, but we can prevent it going forward.
There... There are ways to address the current issue in addition to this, I guess I'll put it that way. But this is an effort to try to have some type of baseline for what an expectation would be for a permanent commercial building.
What constitutes as temporary versus...
But this doesn't even say that, though. This just says, over 30 days, get a permit.
That would mean it would need to be a permanent use.
It doesn't define, like, my question is, does it, you're saying if it's on a chassis, it's temporary. So if they put it on blocks, does that make it permanent? Just because it's on a permanent foundation?
The temporary zoning standard is less than 30 days. So we can allow a trailer to be utilized if the intent is to utilize it for less than 30 days as a temporary use. However, the language to add a character standard is clearly stating that a mobile trailer cannot be utilized as a permanent commercial building.
Yeah, I guess I was going back to the former part, though. Not necessarily this character standard, but the temporary uses. Where it just says, if you, if you're over 30 days, get a permit.
Right.
So I could continue to get a permit? And I don't, but then what?
Yes.
But if I ask for a temporary permit for two years, I mean, that's not something that could be denied, right?
Well, you can't ask for a temporary permit for something more than 30 days. If you're going to exceed 30 days, then you're asking for a more permanent use.
But that's not, that's not what the language is that you've presented to us. I'll read it verbatim. "A temporary use permit must be obtained from the zoning administrator prior to the establishment of any temporary use that will exceed 30 days." So if I need, if I'm going to do 29 days, I don't need a permit. But if I'm going to do 30, or actually if I'm going to do 31, then I gotta get a permit. So either we are allowing it or we're not. Is this one that we could strike and come back with additional language?
Yes. So the intent is if you're less than 30 days, you don't have to get a permit. If you're over 30 days, you get a permit that creates a sunset on your use.
But I, I don't see anything in this language that sunsets the timeframe, right?
That would be established in the permit by the zoning administrator.
But wouldn't we need to define the parameters by which that, I mean, I, I, it seems strange that we're leaving that up to the zoning administrator to make that determination when?
So on L, it says temporary construction trailer or sales office. "A construction trailer or sales office may be established and operated until the time of the certificate of occupancy or completion of the sale of the lots or residences within the subdivision." Number two, "Real estate sales conducted from a temporary sales office are limited to sales of lots within subdivision. It is located and is into other subdivision projects under the same ownership." So it gives you the expectations of when that permit sunsets, when the, the time of the certificate of occupancy or the completion of the sale of the lots.
Correct. If it's a real estate sales or it's a construction trailer. But if it's not one of those two things, then that leaves some ambiguity there for, you know, I, I don't think we should be leaving that up to the zoning administrator to determine how long my food truck can sit there, whether it's 35 days or four years.
Do you have a proposed solution for that, Mr. Meyer?
Well, no. I mean, I think we've put some additional language in here, but I, I mean, I don't know what that is. Is that something we need to decide right now? Or is that something we can pull?
I think it's something we could, we could continue to contemplate and certainly ask for, for some language from PDS or for something to be recommended as that goes through the process.
So are we calling this one the 4.05 and L and seven? Are we calling those number five?
This is number seven on the list, yes.
Okay.
Any additional discussion or thoughts on that one? Okay. Number eight. Okay. Number eight is recommending removing multifamily residential from the list of permitted uses within the Business Park District. Under the previous ordinance, multifamily was permitted in a very limited way within the Business Park District only as a part of an overall planned unit development. A planned unit development would have to incorporate multiple uses and would be coming through as a specific plan for approval of this council. And with a planned unit development, the council would have had the opportunity to place conditions or restrictions on that use. So when it was interpreted in the new zoning code, this was, multifamily was permitted in a much more flexible way within that district. So staff is recommending that that be removed from the permitted use list.
And, and I will comment on this. When it was added to be more flexible, that was definitely intentional. It was, you know, as we're thinking about, you know, what's there. I mean, there, I mean, there, there's a housing shortage in the area. I mean, we can see drive down, you know, drive through Forest, drive down Houston Road, Arrow Parkway. And then there is an opportunity to have additional residents living in our city. You know, I, I think it's, I think it is a good use to be able to, to have some multifamily units in that space over off that area. Number eight.
What is driving that recommendation? Are you able to opine?
Multifamily is no longer a part of what's being considered for that, that property. And there's been active discussions about moving forward with industrial and manufacturing projects for that land.
And they would still be able to move forward with those. But if for some reason something changed, someone still could put multifamily in the BP1, right?
Currently, yes.
If we took this out, it would never be able to be multifamily?
That's correct. That land would be then preserved for economic development purposes.
That's not multifamily? Okay. I'm with Gary. There's a huge housing shortage, shortage. I mean, I think, and that's a, that's a huge trend now to have these, you know, multi-use developments that are residential and commercial in certain places. I mean, I just think that with the housing shortage right now, across the board, at every, you know, economic level, I just, taking away the ability to have housing is hard for me to, hard for me to agree with.
Mrs. Kyle?
I think, I was on council when a company did come in and want to use a business park area for multi-housing. And like you said, we had control over it and we put stipulations on them that they didn't like and so they, they didn't build. I do remember that. So you do have the ability to say no if you keep it that way. But then on the other hand, we need, we need spaces for business too, because that really drives the economy in our neighborhoods. People don't realize how important our businesses are in the community. And I do understand there's a housing shortage, but I, I don't know the answer. I mean, it just seems to me that you need businesses to operate the city. Whereas if you get the housing in there, you're, you're not going to get that extra revenue and you do put more of a strain on your police and your fire departments. So I, like I said, I don't know what the answer is. I don't want to be cold-hearted, but I kind of like the idea of business park being a business park.
Yeah, I think the challenge is, I mean, at the same time, we'll talk about affordable housing. I mean, not just quantity of housing. You know, when we look at what it, what it Amazon Prime need, you know, they're, what, 3,000 to 4,000 employees? And if there's one person, you know, per home, I mean, there, there's not enough housing yet for them. And I think it just gives us an, an additional opportunity to bring people in that could potentially be working from home and paying earlier, and longer city taxes and property taxes sooner. It's not to say that it won't happen. And if, and if the land is developed for something else, then nothing changes, right? I mean, it stays the way it is. It just gives an additional opportunity. And that's really, I think, if we don't want that opportunity to have additional housing there, then, then maybe it does sit empty for, you know, another five, 10 years.
Any further discussion on that one? All right. I will move along. Am I reading that right? Yeah. Number nine. Okay. This text amendment is to remove the requirement for all trash receptacles to be located within the side or rear yard or screened from view within residential districts. This was not required in the previous zoning ordinance, so we are removing that requirement for people to store their, their trash receptacles inside or rear. The requirement will remain for commercial businesses. That concludes. Does anybody have questions on that one? Thank you very much for your attention.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Meyer? Tom, that was good. All right. Any new business? Mr. Meyer?
I, I just want to make, make the formal request to have an item on the caucus meeting in two weeks to discuss the budget amendment regarding unrestricted reserves.
All right. It'll be added to the agenda. Any other new business? Ms. Kyle?
I don't know that this is new business, but didn't we want to discuss with the police department about repeat offenders in a caucus meeting? I thought I remembered that.
New since-
And we kind of like, since the chief wasn't here, I think we delayed it. Is that correct?
I think we were kicking that to the caucus meeting as well, right?
Is that it?
Okay. Cool. Any other new business? Okay. All right. Legislation. Alex?
First on the legislation agenda is an ordinance. It says, "An ordinance of the City of Erlinger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlinger Ordinance Number 2542 and the budget adopted thereby for the City of Erlinger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2022, ending on June 30, 2023." Going to ask Ms. Kara to come up and discuss this a little bit with you. This was previously discussed and-
Kara, do you have anything to add or?
Yeah. Okay. And that was a first, that was a first reading.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance?
The second for legislation is a resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the City of Erlinger related to KY 236 Stevenson Road. So a little bit of backstory about this. This is just going to be an agreement between the City of Erlinger and the Department of Transportation. The amount that will be used for this project is $350,000.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Jasper Lucas, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Third item on legislation is another resolution. This is a resolution of the City of Erlinger, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city to execute two permanent and two temporary easements to Duke Energy. Just a little background story on this one. There will be a permanent easement and a temporary easement on Erlinger Road. Both are under one acre. There will be a permanent easement and a temporary easement on Turfway Road. Again, both are under one acre.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion?
They are paying for those easements, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
The fourth item on legislation is a resolution. It was a resolution that was described in detail prior. This is for text amendment, amendment to your zoning code. Would council like me to go through those amendments since we just did? Okay. So I will not belabor this.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Sorry? Ms. Reckers? Oh. Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the resolution to remove Article V dimensional requirements. That is the driveway one foot. I'm doing one at a time. I'm, I'm going to do, I'm going to do these one at a time, so.
Okay. So that one was number four.
Correct. But it's, but it's section, Article V.
Okay. So 5.08 permitted encroachments.
That is correct.
Okay. So you want to remove number four. Okay.
Eighty seconds.
Oh, I thought you were going to do them all. I-
No, I'm going to do one at a time.
You're going to do them one at a time. All, all right. Do you have a second on that motion, Ms. Reckers? So this motion is to remove number four, which is 5.08 permitted encroachments. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Just so the, the folks at home understand, the recommendation, if we kept it as written, they could apply for a variance, which would likely be approved by the Board of Adjustments. So $35 permit just to have your driveway port and it's $340 to get before the Board of Adjustments. So I think that that is tacky to keep in there and pay almost $400 just to get a variance from a resident. Particularly when there are certain neighborhoods where homes are closer together and you are butting up against the property line. And if you're just doing a reporing, you know, resurfacing your own driveway, it's, I just think that that's outrageous.
I've got a comment. And I just, before we-
Is this the proper time to be doing?
Yeah, before we move forward with it, I mean, should we be concerned with, if you're going to build a, a driveway that a butts up next to someone's house without that one-foot setback? You know, driveways are impermeable. Water is going to run off to the side and it's likely that that water is going to run off into your neighbor's basement. So while, you know, there may be a $300, $400 cost to the landowner, I mean, what is the effect of adjacent landowners where they have this runoff into their basement? I'm not an expert in this area, but I just think that water is going to flow where it can flow. If there is a gap of grass or, you know, some type of permeable area there, it's going to prevent damage to your neighbor's property. So while I'm all for removing unnecessary regulations, I mean, this may be one instance where it's probably best practices to keep that in.
So existing driveways, people cannot resurface their driveway because of this? So in the event that, that a driveway's been there for 50 years and needs to be resurfaced?
Well, there wouldn't be any because it's already been in where there's the one-foot variance. So we wouldn't have any driveways that a butt next to someone's property hypothetically, right? Unless there was already a variance.
Yeah, I would disagree with that. I, I think there's plenty of flaglets out there that if they decided to resurface, they would now need to, even if it encompassed the exact same area, they would have to do a variance to do that.
I mean, is there anyone that can speak to the potential risk to a neighboring property as opposed to just looking at the practicality of, you know, going through a zoning process or, or changing something? I mean, are we, are we creating a policy that's going to lead to a future risk of harm to an adjacent landowner?
Well, it doesn't eliminate that. It just costs an additional $350 or $340 to get it. I mean, if the Board of Adjustments actually said no, then I think that might be a fair point, but just unfortunately, it's not, it's rare that, that it is a no.
Mrs. Kyle?
My house is 50 years old and there, I mean, the lots, the way the lots are built and they were built by trees, you have, some of them have more than a foot on the side of the, but all of them have at least a foot. So how far back do we have to go before we're going to find somebody that's in this situation where they can't resurface their driveway? Mr. Vehox, do you know? I mean, go back to the, I don't know, the 50s, 40s, when houses were built, did they have this same regulation? I don't know. That's what we probably need to look at.
I mean, I think what, the point we might be missing is that the setback requirement existed in the previous ordinance. And it was-
existed in the previous ordinance and it was omitted when the Z-21 was pushed through. So...
My, my only, I, I see what you're saying and I completely understand and I think generally speaking, I wouldn't care, but when it was mentioned that, oh, they'll just apply for a variance and I pull up the application and it's $340 for a variance, I just think that that's obnoxious, given that we're adding this back in. I just...
Lets them in the variance. Lets them in the cost for a variance. Lower it from $300.
Cool with that. You know, the...
We'll be tackling codes next.
Yeah. If, if someone is, is going to redo their driveway or they're going to build a driveway, I mean, right now, the cost of a driveway is, I mean, but you, but you are, you're saying it's ticky tacky, you know, that it's 340 bucks. When you're talking about spending somewhere between $10,000 and $30,000 on redoing your driveway, it's, it's not that big of an issue. And my, my, my other point is, it's never been brought up that people are like, this is a major problem, you know, we had to spend this extra $340 up until Z-21. I mean, that's never, it's never been an issue.
My, my only issue is that the solution is, oh, just apply for a variance. They'll say yes. Pay us City of Erlinger $350, $340, thank you.
No, the, the point of the variance is that it, it causes, I mean, it gives, it gives a notice to the neighbor that they plan on doing it. And right now, the neighbor does not, if we, if this goes forward, the neighbor does not need to get any notice. And if I decide to build a driveway that goes right up to the zero lot line, I have to destroy part of their yard in order to build it. And I don't have to ask for permission to do that. And that's not right.
Mark, did you want to add something?
This would not apply to any driveways that are existing. We don't charge permits for any existing driveways if you're redoing it. If you're expanding your driveway is when we would, this would be enforced or put in a brand new driveway, because we have several properties on the old part of Erlinger that never had a driveway, now they're, they're putting them in. So if you have an existing driveway that butts up to the property line and you're going to resurface it or replace it totally, we would not charge a permit, we would not enforce this ordinance on it because you're just replacing what was existing. So that would take care of that problem, I'm sorry, your, your situation that you're come up with of causing them to go to Board of Adjustments just to replace their driveway, that would not happen at all. It's only when you're expanding your driveway or a brand new driveway for a property that did not have it. So at that point, if you're expanding it, then you're going to have potentially, I mean, I have, that's generally where we get to the variances, when people are trying to expand something on their property. So, so then, yeah. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that that's how we've been interpreting the ordinance all these years, if it's existing and you replace it, then it's fine.
All right. Any... So we need to do a roll call. You guys are so much fun. It really is. You keep us on our toes.
So just a clarification, a yes vote would be to remove number four.
Correct.
Which addresses Article 5. And a no vote would be to leave it in to the resolution. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Hoffman, please.
Mr. Skidmore? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. So, oh. It's, so it's a no? It's a no, okay.
Mr. Hermes just did. Oh, okay. All right, so this number four, so adding language to require driveways to be setback at least one foot. Gary made the amendment to remove that. So to make it zero. So there's, there would be no setback. So a yes vote would be to remove that one-foot variance. A no vote would be to not remove that from this document. Make sense? Yes is zero feet, no is one foot. Am I allowed to do that?
Take me. I will start our work. Mr. Skidmore?
Yeah, a no, I want the one foot.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes.
Ms. Reckers?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
No.
Mr. Doan?
No.
Mr. Nipper?
No.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No.
Ms. Kyle?
No.
Ms. Skidmore?
No.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Motion failed. Number four, Article 5, remains. Mr. Meyer?
Mayor, I want a motion to remove the temporary uses. That's from Article 4, Use and Regulation Standards, Section 4.05, and from Article 7, the character standards associated with that. And, in hopes of having some additional discussion before we get there.
Okay, so this is number seven. This is adding language within the use-specific standards to allow temporary uses in construction trailers. The Z-21 blueprint model code provided language to allow for temporary uses in construction trailers. However, this language was not adopted as part of the new zoning ordinance. Staff feels the addition of this language could be beneficial moving forward. In addition, a character standard will be added to clarify that mobile trailers are not permitted as permanent commercial buildings. There is a motion on the floor to remove that item. Do I have a second, Ms. Jasper Lucas? Is there any discussion?
Can we add it to the caucus meeting to discuss?
Yes, ma'am. Let's see here. So Sherry, that's Article 4, Use and Regulations, Use Regulations and Standards, Section 4.05, Use Specific Standards, Temporary Uses. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Are we on number eight?
Are we on seven or eight?
No, we're on seven. It's Article 7. But number eight.
Was, was the zoning districts, was Article 7.1 or Table 7.1? That's just, that's, that's going before that. So that goes down through not just, just want to be clear, number seven includes 4.05, Use Specific Standards, letter K, L, and Article 7, number 10, that was being added. Okay. Just wanted to make sure she got the right pieces to strike out before we go forward. Yes.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, I want to make a motion to remove item number eight, which is the multifamily usage and continuing to allow that in the BP-1 zone.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to remove number eight. Mr. Hermes? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended with numbers seven and eight removed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Ms. Elmore? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Are there any announcements this evening? Mr. Hermes?
I would really like to hand it to the mayor, council, Mrs. Kearns, Emmy Randall, that we were so boring this evening that our, our council reporter left at eight o'clock, you know, like almost 40 minutes ago. This is a huge advancement for the city. This is, this is a day I've been working for, for many, many years and I'm so proud of all of you right now. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.